Item 10D, receive report and provide direction to staff regarding an application for funding to establish a downtown and transit station shuttle service.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is being brought forward tonight to obtain the City Council's interest and your opportunity for discussion of an initiative that has been begun by Vice Mayor Medina to take advantage of a biannual grant opportunity that is circulated by the Samhain County Transportation Authority and CCAG. The grant opportunity is for a two-year funding allotment to establish and operate shuttle services within local communities. As you may know, there is currently shuttle service available to the public in San Bruno. Those shuttles are operated under the umbrella of Walmart.com and Google YouTube and provide primarily shuttle service between the public transit areas of Caltrain, BART, and those business locations on Cherry Avenue in the Bay Hill Business Park. Those shuttles are available to the public, although they are operated by those companies. This grant opportunity is only available to public agencies. In other words, it requires an applicant to be a public agency and to commit to 25 percent of the program funding. At this point, Vice Mayor Medina has done some initial work on a grant proposal and doubtless has some more comments and some specifics about the proposal that he would like to see the city pursue. The reason that this is being brought forward to you tonight is because it is, in fact, not an individual or a member of the public who can make application or even a private business. An application must be submitted by the local public agency, in this case, the city. And there are certain requirements that attach to, or certain commitments that need to be made as part of a grant application. Again, this is a two-year grant funding cycle. Presumably, the opportunity will present itself again in two years. And there are certain requirements that we would explore further in terms of a grant application if it is the City Council's interest that we pursue this. With that, I would suggest, although staff is available to answer any questions that we can, I would suggest that Vice Mayor Medina have the opportunity to provide any specifics about his ideas.
You're on.
Okay. So as stated, there are two shuttles. One shuttle goes from BART to up to the Bay Hill, and the other shuttle goes from Caltrain up to Bay Hill. One paid for by Walmart.com, one paid for by YouTube. They run from approximately from seven, 6:30 to 10 o'clock in the morning. Then they stop, and then they restart from 4:00 to 6:30. This shuttle, this preliminary schedule that I put together was to provide two shuttles that would operate continuously from 7:00 to 7:00, or if we needed to move that up, 6:30 to 6:30, whatever it would be. And that would allow the growing number of employees working at YouTube or the residents in San Bruno to be able to take the shuttle, starting from the south of downtown, run through downtown, go to Caltrain, stop over at BART, and continue on their way to Bay Hill. The benefit of doing that is starting a shuttle system in San Bruno. It's something that, you know, traffic's getting worse, and with the money being available there, it was something that I think that we could possibly pursue. The other thing is the benefit of having that shuttle remain continuous is that an employee could kind of manage their life a little bit instead of worrying about that gap between when the shuttles don't run, is to be able to maybe go home early, go home late, and still be able to function and perform their job duties. The other benefit, besides giving people from that area an opportunity to come downtown, they can come downtown early and hang out, do a little shopping, and then later on, if that other shuttle comes by in the next 15, 20 minutes, continue on their way and to get home. The other part of this proposal, the current proposal, would be to offer the shuttle to operate on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. And that part of the reasoning there was, again, this is where allowing the community to kind of leave from downtown to get up to Bay Hill or vice versa. And I think I've been in contact with Commute.org. This morning, I spoke with the representative from YouTube, and they're going to be taking back the current schedule and see how that works with them with the idea that Walmart, that YouTube and eventually Walmart would be able to come up with the additional money that they're spending currently on their own shuttle and to apply that to this route and therefore reduce the cost that is coming from the city.
When do these applications have to begin?
So my understanding is the applications are due by 4:00 p.m., not by postmark, but by delivery by 4:00 p.m. on February 12th.
It's tight.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Ken.
I'm looking at the application, and whether it's an existing shuttle or it's a new shuttle application, there's some requirements here, minimum requirements, that were required by January 5th. So I was wondering if that had been either discussed as to being able to have an extension on that. I think it's, if we don't have any other restrictions, I mean, we move forward on it. But I've been involved in these, and I've been on the other side of the reviewing these. And if you don't meet the minimum requirements and you don't have the application in place, they really don't have a chance, because there are other applications, a lot of other applications. So I was hoping that maybe there has been some pre-application discussion as to how we answer a lot of these minimum requirements, because they say if you answer no on anything, then you may have a problem. So, I mean, it doesn't say you don't qualify, it just means that you do have to provide something else. So, I don't know where we stand at that.
Well, I understand your desire to have a shuttle that would serve the people and have commuters go downtown. If I was an employee, though, I wouldn't want them to be doing that during work hours. However, I'm on the committee that reviews not only the applications themselves, but the application and how people fill it out and how entities do it. We've gone through, I think, about 10 years of shuttle applications through a variety of cities. Belmont has done them, Foster City's done them. What they have found out, if they do that kind of shuttle, it's a, where they go into a work area and go down to a downtown and back, it is usually free, a shuttle to start out and to get ridership up. And then, once it's established, they ask people to pay because it's very expensive. It asks on the application for a 25 percent matching fund through the city, which I understand is about $100-plus thousand dollars as a minimum, which is, I know we haven't budgeted for that. I would, I think we would be a little hard-pressed to find that. I know we could use Measure A gas tax money, but that money right now is earmarked for street paving and sidewalk repairs and different things like that. So the other piece that we need to look at carefully is when you do those things, and it happened in Foster City and Belmont, they take, they leach, tend to leach the ridership away from Samtrans, and that's one of the very first application pieces that you have to do, that Samtrans has to write a letter saying, "No, you're not duplicating services. No, you're not going to be taking away our ridership." So since the people, in my view, since the people are being served by the YouTube and the Walmart shuttles are ready, the public's allowed to go to the, to go on them and go to BART and Caltrain. That's what, that's the purpose of the shuttles. Commuter.com is called that because it is supposed to alleviate congestion. That's what the congestion management team I'm on does, and that's what we do. And if this, if the application that you're talking about came through us, as much as I would love to say yes to something in the city, I would be hard-pressed too, because it's duplicating some of the, if you can look up there and see where Route 140 is, it's duplicating some of what you're talking about, and I believe 141 also duplicates the other piece of it. So any, you know, right now, Samtrans, I believe they recover 18 cents on the dollar of fare box recovery, so that for every dollar a passenger pays, it only covers 18 cents of the cost of running the shuttle, of their, I'm sorry, of their bus service. So they already have problems paying for their own things. And if we leech away customers from them, they have told me, not me personally, they have told other cities that have done this, that they would consider withdrawing their services and those lines because it's a duplication of service. So it's one of those things that sounds great and sounds like something we should be doing, but I don't recommend it for those reasons. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions, because I've served on those committees for a long time.
I also think it's, in the bigger picture, it's a really good idea. The problem is, we just don't have enough time to do it now. We haven't budgeted any funds, and I would much rather see this addressed in the fairly near future, again, when our transit corridors plan really kicks in, and we have the development that's planned in the downtown actually come out of the ground. You can have more people living there and working there, and I think it's a better opportunity in the future to maybe make an argument for a shuttle. And maybe the city at that point in time could actually sponsor one if we have enough residential units in and around the transit corridors area that could support it. I just think it's a little premature at this time.
Through the chair.
We did get some communication from Samtrans that they were considering reducing the service of Route 141, which would be not this year but next year, and that the duplication of effort, there would be a way that they could work with our, with my proposal, my current proposal. So it's kind of like, I know we could, it could be seen that we're drawing away from that, but we're also offering something to our residents that are getting them to different parts of San Bruno.
Anyone else?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Can we take a little step and try and publicize more the current shuttle availability times from Walmart and Google YouTube to the residents so that maybe at least that program will pick up a little bit of ridership, and in the long run, that will help us?
Anyone else?
Jeffrey Tong. I'm from Fleetwood at the top of Skyline. I'd like to address Ken's question, I believe. With regards to the January 5th deadline, I did attend the TA and CCAG workshop, and they said as long as they contact Tracy Lee, the coordinator, that would meet the requirement. With regards to Irene's comment that it would duplicate routes, as Councilmember Medina stated, Samtrans has already planned to remove or eliminate Route 141, which is an elementary school shuttle, so to speak. Route 140 is actually going to Manor in Pacifica, and Skyline College is the waypoint there. And it barely serves Rollingwood and Portola Highlands area. I took a survey on Nextdoor.com, and I got 44 responses for residents in San Bruno who said 90 percent of them are willing to use the shuttle. And of those, I had another survey asking people, "How long would you be willing to wait?" I had less than, of about 22 responses, less than 9 percent, or two respondents, said they would be willing to wait up to an hour. But 45 percent were willing to wait up to half an hour, and up to 72 percent were willing to wait 20 minutes. In other words, if you have a shuttle, Samtrans claims there'll be, they want to reduce these lines because there's no demand, but it's the infrastructure that is flawed. If you can put at minimum of two shuttles, I'm pretty sure you can increase your ridership tremendously. And number one, Caltrain and BART is half a mile apart. Number two, downtown needs revitalization. Number three, Skyline already has issues in which they need transit from BART and Caltrain. So this shuttle, even though it may not reach Skyline or Lunardi's or the other four shopping malls or shopping centers, four transit centers and different businesses, this can be a seed. You need to sow the seeds now, because, again, Samtrans has already designated Route 140 to be eliminated next year. Thank you.
Orion Rusney of Keynes Avenue. I'd like to speak in support of the idea. As I understand the proposal, rather than the city having to pay for it, we would get the majority of it paid for by, well, Google owns YouTube, YouTube and Walmart.com. They would be able to eliminate the need for their own shuttles. Secondly, I do think it's a great way to bring people downtown. With that many workers, it'd be nice, I don't think they're going to go downtown to shop on their lunch break, but they might come down to eat. You could do it as a fundraiser. The Chamber of Commerce can offer discounts to bring people downtown to eat, either before work or after work for a drink. That would be the easiest way to revitalize downtown without us having to pay anything. Thank you very much.
Ken?
I think it's needed. I just don't know if we have the chance. If we want to go through the practice of making the, filling out the application and getting in by the deadline, it's still going to be up to the governing boards to review them. And from what I'm hearing from our representatives that are, you know, actually in the middle of this stuff, there may be some, you know, factors that, you know, that deny us the grant. So I'm all in favor of applying for it, but I'd hate to lose any more public transportation out of the application. But it's, it looks like the trend is that we're going to have to supplement it in some case, you know, in the future. But I don't know how staff is situated to, you know, perform the application, fill out the application, and how far we are. I mean, I think it's good that we did, we did address what Councilwoman O'Connell was on, is this, the letter from Samtrans as far as concurrence. So if they, if they don't provide that letter of concurrence, then you don't have an application, is my understanding. So that would be your first, our first, you know, approach to the grant.
Anything, Rico?
Yeah, and you like this, I'd like to echo what Mr. Iberes said. As far as with the Samtrans, I think that's the first thing. I appreciate Mr. Medina going through this effort. It is a needed thing. Route 141 is of a concern, and I think Ken had said it best. If we want to take the step, maybe we can do that.
And Irene, I think obviously you have a lot of knowledge and background in this, which can be shared or any guidance you can give from now and into the future.
I would like us to, I would like to urge us to give this a comprehensive look. Maybe a shuttle would be something to look at once the apartments at El Camino Plaza are ready, and that would give you an additional reason to have the people come back. That would also be the piece that would appeal to the congestion management part of it, because that's what we want to do, is keep cars off the road. So if, you know, part of all the scoring that goes through this, and again, it comes through my committee, we, we, yea or nay, each of these applications, part of all of this is a scoring thing that says, "How many, how many cars are you going to take off the road? How much greenhouse gas emissions are you eliminating? How much cost per rider does that amount to?" It's not, you know, all of this has weight to it, and then, once that is done, you get the money or not. And I think we would have a better chance and give a better product to our residents, future ones as well, if we take into account what the mayor was saying with the pieces of the downtown. Right out of my head.
Transit.
Thank you. Transit quarter measure and pieces. So, you know, I don't want to throw cold water on you for this. I appreciate your efforts in all of it, but through my experience and all the different things that I've heard from different cities, this can be a good piece of something bigger, and I think we, as a city, can look at that. One thing we might do in the meantime is make a strong case to Samtrans that they, that they need, they should not shut down Route 141. Or if they're planning on it, they need to give us a better heads-up on what's going on and how are they going to phase it out, and what are we going to do with residents that are dependent on that route. So I would, instead of having staff spend time on this, which I'm telling you, it's not going to pass, I would like staff to liaison with the Samtrans staff and find out what is happening with Route 141 and what do we need it to do as a city to boost ridership on that, and what is their projections, you know, if we can boost ridership on that, and Mr. Tang had helped with his Nextdoor advertising those things, that could be something that we could actually get accomplished and, with no cost to the city right now, anyway. So, does that?
So currently, YouTube, Google has approximately 1,200 employees, and with their purchasing of two buildings, they're going to be at 2,000. So there's 800 more workers, 800 more trips. In order for this ridership, the required ridership is 195, and this is, this data's from Commute.org. So if we get 10 percent of those 2,000 commuters, we are in compliance with the required ridership. I think it's worthwhile, and I totally respect your views on this, but waiting, San Bruno has been waiting for a long time. That hotel, not hotel, the plaza, the former theater, that won't be built for another year and a half, if not two years. This is a two-year grant. We take a shot, we learn from our mistakes, or we can even get it. And I think that we should take a shot.
Okay, well, it sounds like the majority of the council feels that it's a little premature at this point in time, and I happen to agree with Irene. We should concentrate our efforts at Route 141 and see, you know, what are you doing? And if there's anticipation about closing it down, we have to fight to keep that line open. As I said, I think it's too premature. We don't have anything in the budget for it. We probably don't have enough staff time to get this done in time, because we're right on top of a deadline here pretty quick. So tell me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but I think the direction is to hold this off at this time. If anybody disagrees, let me know, other than the Vice Mayor, who obviously disagrees. I know that.
Well, I'm not, I don't want to deny, you know, the group here from, you know, making the statement and voting on it. It's just that I don't know, you know, what, you know, what the chances are, and, you know, we have, we have staff that is, is going to have to be involved in it. And then I have a colleague who is right in the middle of the review process. And I have some knowledge of the review process, even on smaller projects, bicycle and pedestrian projects, and they're very competitive. And the weights and measures and answering the questions and the data, you know, has to be very compelling, because it is a lot of money. And then the question is, how are we going to pay for it? So take a stab.
Well, I don't want to be too blunt, but I think we're wasting our time. I also sit as, on the Board of Directors of Commute.org, and I see these things come through, and they're very, very comprehensive, very, very detailed, and very competitive. And I don't think the city is in a position at this point in time to jump into that mix. So that's my suggestion. So staff is just looking for direction at this time. I don't think. Ken, go, no-go?
I'd like to hear from staff and see what, you know, what's entailed. I think, is it Mr. Tam who would be spearheading it, and, you know, what's left? You know, what is, what is realistic here?
So staff can certainly put together or facilitate putting together an application. I think the issue is going to be whether that application is sufficiently competitive. Based on my, at this point, limited understanding of the grant requirements, and I've learned from the discussion here tonight with those of you who have been involved with some of the actual grant submittal and reviews, that there, one issue I'm aware of is the need to provide good quantitative information about ridership potential. My understanding is that that's a important criteria. The organizations are interested in funding grant applications that have a high probability of success. Between now and the, and the beginning of February, I would say it would be very difficult for us to produce, unless that data is available somewhere else. I know Vice Mayor Medina had some, some numbers, I think, that were generated by Commute.org in terms of the numbers of persons that it would take in order to make the program viable. The question, I think, is good quality data about our projected ridership. What would the, what would the actuals be? That's, that's one issue. I, I think the, I guess that's the primary issue. I, and again, my, my understanding of the grant criteria is fairly limited. So at this point, I think my short answer is, we could put together a grant application. I'm not sure that that would be, that we have the data or the information that would allow us to do a detailed and comprehensive job.
Would it be a basis for, you know, would it be a good try at making an application? Like, like the Vice Mayor says, I mean, we take a stab, and we learn if we don't get it, which indications are we have a, you know, an uphill chance. We learn from our, you know, we learn from our shortcomings on that one.
Yeah, and again, without any Yeah, and again, without any firsthand knowledge about the specifics of the, of the review process or the other applications, or, you know, the, the details of this process, the conversations I had with individuals more knowledgeable about the program than I am indicates that the city's chances would be pretty limited. So, again, we can put together an application. I would not anticipate that we would have a high probability of success.
All right, let's, Irene, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I guess I, I don't know how to be clearer. The application comes through CMAC. When those applications come through, they are discussed at, at the committee level, and, I mean, they go through staff and they go through the technical level, but the people who make the ultimate decisions are the group that I am, I was the chair of, I was the vice chair of, I was all these things. And we look very carefully at the money that is being spent. I mean, half a million dollars to move a few people around to go from work to a downtown is not what this money is for. It's for getting people out of their cars to go to work. It's, it's, that's why it's called commuter shuttles. If, if YouTube and Walmart.com are already doing that, and as they increase their employee base, they're going to increase their shuttles. If they're already taking care of those things, I don't want us to spend taxpayers' money, our general fund money, tax, Measure A money, whatever money it is, on a duplication of effort. It doesn't make any sense. And I, I will tell you now, unless, I will tell you now, Samtrans is not going to send a letter saying they comply. I am not going to, as a member of the CMAC board, say yes to this. I can't be any blunter than that. I don't agree with it. I don't think it does what it's supposed to do. I don't think the city's ready to do that. I think there are opportunities. Yes, it's going to take two years to do it, but what, what this money is for is to take cars off the road. Not, not people going from work to have lunch, people who are going to work. It's, it's to, they call it the last mile. You know, it's a connectivity between public transportation like BART and Caltrain and the actual job site, and that's what those shuttles do. And we, as a city, don't have to pay for them. So, I don't, I understand revitalizing downtown. We've been working for 20 years to try to revitalize downtown. I understand about getting cars off the road. I understand all those things. This, to me, is not how it is the best approach to do it. I think we have better opportunities, and that's
And, and
As long as I can pay.
And, and, and I, and I truly appreciate that because I respect you as, as a representative of the city, and you, you are experienced, and you've been on these committees for, as long as I know. We need your vote on this, and we need your support on that. And, and I realize that the, the rest of the committees are going to look to you to say, "If you can't support an application in your own city, then maybe you need to go back to the drawing board." And I think this is the start, and I believe we, we should use those two years for the next go-around.
Okay. I agree with Irene. I agree with Ken. Rico?
Yeah, I, I do think we do need to start addressing the shuttle, and I think Mr. Medina did a lot of work. I have a concern, Irene, I mean, yes, you're being blunt, and that, that's something that you and I said is the best thing to do.
Tried to be more subtle earlier, but it didn't work.
It's what we needed. But I do have a concern. What I, what I want to make sure is that the time the staff's going to spend actually has some value and it has some result.
Right.
We're not always going to win, but I want us to have a good fighting chance. And unfortunately, if the, if the sentiment's going to be as, as what you said, and the reality of what may happen, then I, but I, I get that, and I appreciate your openness. But I also would hope that there is something that we can do rather than wait the two years, and that we start to address the topic that came up, and we move on a better pace than us hoping for, you know, something else.
That, and that is the point. It, it takes a while to, to do these things. They're, they're not as straightforward as some of the information that's put in public may appear. There's subtleties to it that, how can I explain it? Doesn't matter. Samtrans will work very hard with us not to duplicate services, not to take ridership away from them, and to do a good job. You know, the commute.org will do the same. CCAG and the CMAC staff will sit down with our staff as soon as they get direction from us to do a good job and, and practically guarantee that what we present to them will go forward and will, I don't say they're going to guarantee that we'll get the loan, but that the application itself would be the best possible application. Foster City spent hundreds of staff hours, I mean, literally hundreds of staff hours, to do very similar what we're talking about, and it was a, oh, I think it was called Sunshine Shuttle or something like that, and they did the very, very same thing, and they had, it was, it was, did a loop, it went through their downtown, it picked up people at their high, high concentrated employment areas. People used it. It was fabulous because it was free, and, because it was free. And they, the minute they started charging, even as little as 50 cents and a dollar, the ridership went away. So, it wasn't doing what the, what it was designed to do. Foster City reapplied. We on the CMAC committee and the other committees looked at it. We, we tightened up all the regulations. We said, you know, "You're only getting X amount of ridership." The cost per rider was $18 door-to-door per ride. They were getting, no, I know, it's, I mean, we don't look at it, but that's what it was, to get a person from their work to, to downtown to, well, see, YouTube has their own cafeteria. They don't come out too often to go buy food anywhere else. Their food's really good. So, anyway, I know I sound kind of scrooge-y about it. I don't intend to be that way, and I, I don't intend to be negative, but I just really think we'll, we'll have a good, solid application and process if we look at the bigger picture, where we're going to be in two years, start the application process six months before that, which is only eight, it's only 18 months away from now. I know, it, it's kind of mind-boggling, you know, because you, you go home and you do it, you know, two days from now or whatever, but government works because of the public process, takes longer. So, anyway, that's my suggestion.
Okay. So, having said all that, I believe you have direction. Thank you.